Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, September 12th School Committee Meeting here at the Colbert School. We're going to move right into public comments. I have a few signups. Jeff and Emily Keen. Can I show you some of the microphone? Just a reminder to everybody that public comment is an opportunity for you to speak and make a comment or discuss an issue. It's not a back and forth with the committee. We'll get back to you separately and just wanted to clarify, just clarify that it's a public comment.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for having us here. Again, my name is Jeff Keen and I'm a resident of Braintree on Kendall Ave. And my daughter is a student at South Middle School. As you all know, I was here at the June meeting, I'm sorry, the July meeting. And just to follow up on that, as Mr. Lee is aware, one of the students that was involved in the assault and battery on my daughter, school bus and other incidents after that now transferred to South Middle School as well. And that student is on the bus with my daughter. And since last Friday, as he is aware, has been harassing her and bullying her since last Wednesday. And I just want to see, are we putting monitors on the bus? Are we doing anything to protect our students on the buses? Are we doing anything to further protect our students within the buildings? I'm going to be a staunch advocate for all students of Braintree to ensure there's full safety in all of these schools. I can't stress that enough. And I don't, we have serious concerns about that safety.
Thank you. Thank you. Well.
Thank you.
We'll follow up with you. Oh, Emily wants to say something.
Emily wants to say something, yeah. Like my dad said, at my school, there was this girl who was not being very nice to me. She used to be my friend, but now she's not being very nice. She is swearing at me. She's not being very sweet.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Chris and Angela Peters.
My name's Chris. My kids, this is my wife Angela, our kids go to Flaherty School. We were recently made aware that my children ages eight and nine were asked to present themselves, their names, their full names, and their preferred pronouns in front of the class. This is unacceptable to me. My kids barely know how to use pronouns and bringing the idea of gender theory within the classroom is a little too early for that age group. We have sent emails to the principal. The principal emailed us back and said that this was like an isolated incident and it was kind of like, I don't know, kind of glossed over as if them, they didn't actually have to say their pronouns in front of the class, which is not true. Our children have been told that they were, they, they were asked their full names and their preferred pronouns and they went around the classroom. We talked to many parents about this. A lot of the parents have shown extreme anger and frustration. We just found out, like, this is kind of new. We just found out that there's a school committee meeting tonight, so I think a lot more parents are
I expect more emails.
They expect more out of the school and I guess more of the truth as to what's going on. To me, that is unacceptable. I think a lot of other parents actually agree with us. And going forward, we need an explanation and probably an apology and it needs to absolutely cease. Otherwise, I'm, I don't really know where to go from there.
Do you want to add anything?
Yes, I know that most of you have gotten the email from us. Mine is a very lengthy email, so I'm not going to go into all the bullet points and things that I brought up. But as a summary, my husband is correct. So we just learned about this Saturday. There was, I think, a para that was sent to each and every classroom. As far as I know, first grade, third grade and a fourth grade, so I'm assuming most grades. And she went in, explained that it's important to address people correctly in the way that they want to be addressed. She asked them all to go around and announce their names with the correct pronunciation and their preferred pronouns. I have spoken to my children independently and I've spoken to parents of other children and all the children answered the same way. That's what they were asked to name them, to say their name and their pronouns. And they went around the room and all took turns. There are many reasons why this is inappropriate. You've gotten the emails, most of you. At the top of the list is, this is a personal, complex situation that should be dealt with within the family of children who's young. They don't have a lot of questions. They left that school confused. They felt embarrassed. They felt that what they said might have been wrong and now they're going to be picked on because they didn't know what they were answering. And that's third and fourth grade. That's not even the first grade, potentially kindergarten, second grade. Who knows what happened? A half those kids are now impacted. So it's inappropriate at that age. My children, our children are brought up with love and understanding. And we are going to speak to them about these things when they're brought up in our home. We're going to be there to answer all their questions and support them and have them understand all their peers in a respectful, loving manner. They're not going to be brought up, this isn't going to be brought up at school at this time in their life. It's completely inappropriate. We were not asked permission. We were not given warning that this was going to be brought up. We wouldn't have allowed it at the school. Or if it was going to be brought up, like very soon, we didn't have any options. We would talk about it at home to prepare them. This was inappropriate. You also don't ask children this in a group of people. This is a very personal matter. If they want to use a different pronoun, if they identify as something else other than their birth gender, that's their personal decision as to when and how they out themselves or ask for that. You don't do that in a group of people. All right, there's many things wrong with this. The emails, like 10 bullet points, long away three paragraphs. It's very long. I'm not going to go into all of it. Those are the biggest problems they have. The most of the biggest problem is also the response that I've seen that the principal, and it's only happened at Flaherty. I haven't heard any other schools having brought this up. But the principal did send out a response to some of the complaints and basically said that our children have gotten it wrong. That they must have said something, they must have misheard or misunderstood. So on one hand, they think it's appropriate. They think the children are old enough to broach this subject with them in school. They think it's okay, independent of their parents. But then the other hand, now they're calling the children stupid that they didn't get it correct, that they're lying or they're inaccurate. Which is it? Are they old enough for this question that you brought up? Or are they not ready? Because now you're, now you're pulling the not ready card and that they don't understand it. So I felt disrespected. I felt insulted. I felt my children disrespected and I just don't think it's appropriate. And then we have large concerns. We have many friends, many other parents with these same concerns. And like my husband said, luckily, this meeting is happening tonight, I think for your benefit, because we just learned about this Saturday. And the emotions are ramping up about this and it's like a wildfire.
Thank you both for being here. We did receive a number of emails and I spoke to Chris prior to this meeting, just for everyone else's information. And he did inform us that this is probably going to be a widespread, but I've asked Mr. Lee to, to address it, to, to respond.
I mean, I addressed it, but I believe Miss Soto has reached out to both of you to try to schedule a meeting. And we'll do that as quickly as we can. We would agree that it was not developmentally appropriate and the staff member has been spoken to. But we'll continue the conversations when we get a chance to sit down with Miss Soto.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yep, thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to make a public comment that didn't sign in? Okay, we're going to moving into our agenda. So routine matters. We are going to welcome our new school committee members.
We certainly are. And to do that, I have asked Ms. Vernaza to introduce our newest members of the school committee.
All right. I'm just meeting them too, so it feels funny to introduce you, but we'll start with Will because he's our senior and he's actually not new, right? You're returning?
Yeah.
He's, he's an old hat at this, but I asked teachers and guidance counselors and Mr. Schuffel is here, so he probably could add some things, but to give us a brief overview of each of these students. So independent, selfless, driven and respectful are words used to describe Mr. Rafferty. There is no doubt that even with one year left, Braintree is already a better place because of Will and his determination to better this community. He's a natural born leader. Will steps up when others won't. He lives his life with integrity, even when others may not agree. He is self-aware, proud and has a confidence that will not allow others to influence him in a negative way. He has the ability to do this all while having the utmost respect and understanding for others' opinions.
Welcome back, Will.
Yeah, that's nice to see. Next, we have Samantha. Do you go by Samantha?
Samantha or Sam is fun.
Okay. Samantha is a current junior who is very committed to the school community. Samantha is a board member for Environmental Club, active member of Model UN, Girls That Lift, National Arts Honor Society and the Girls' Golf Team. Sam enjoys volunteering her time to different community organizations and has a great passion for linguistics. She is currently learning Spanish, French, Portuguese and Latin. Welcome.
This award looks very proud.
I was going to say, did you match her there? Calvin. Calvin is also a junior with us. Calvin's guidance counselor, Ms. Ruse, said Calvin is a bright young man who keeps on top of all of his school assignments and test preparation. Calvin is also involved in our music department as an instrumentalist in our Wind Ensemble. And I think he will do a great job helping represent our students in Town Matters. Welcome. And Anika or Anika?
Anika.
Anika, is that right? All right. Anika is an extremely, also a junior, is an extremely hardworking student who has excelled in her academics at Braintree High School. Anika demonstrates her ability and maturity in the classroom and with the respect she shows her peers and teachers. Anika is not only an academic standout at Braintree High School, she is a kind, compassionate and genuine young lady who will no doubt be a future leader in our community. You guys sound exactly who we need to be leading our school.
Welcome to all of you.
Yes, welcome.
Yeah.
All right, I need to ask a question. Why did you want to serve on the school committee?
I started.
Since you're experienced.
This is my returning year. I had a great experience last year serving as a student representative. I've always been really interested and passionate about getting involved in politics around me. I really want to study political science when I go to college. And then I've really been involved in leadership roles. I'm student body president over at the high school. And I just really enjoyed the opportunity for last year and I thought it was a great choice to return.
Excellent. Thank you. Sam?
So education is something that I place a lot of value upon in being able to represent my school, my peers, and having input to better all of our experiences at the high school and throughout the school system is something that I am eager to have a role in. And I believe that doing change, making change is through your actions, not just your opinions or words. And that's why I'd like to be active.
Excellent. Calvin?
I've always been intrigued in student leadership. I've found it easier and easier over the years in the high school to get more involved with the community. And I thought this was another way that I could do that. It drives me to want to get involved with my community, which, you know, is always something that I'm really passionate about.
Excellent. Anika?
Yes, Calvin said, I was first, you know, I first started participating in community service in eighth grade when I was selected for a nonprofit from like East Middle School and the staff there called Project 351. And I'm really involved with that nonprofit. It's just a youth leadership nonprofit where we help in nature schools through community service and volunteering. And that was my first start to seeing like the impact you can have in your community and how supporting everyone is. And ever since that, I've become like more involved with my intra-club, like community clubs, like Best Buddies and just volunteering and doing community service. It's just a big passion of mine and I realize the impact that it has. And school committees are definitely like a great way to, you know, involve your school, like whole school and see the impact you can have and advocate for other people's voices. And I'm just really glad I got the opportunity.
I forgot to mention that we, we saw Anika at the Summer Mass Superintendent's Association seminar. She spoke at, 10th representative Braintree, as part of Project 351.
Everywhere. I'm familiar with her work on 351. So you're a wonderful addition. So thank you all very much for your willingness to serve. Later in our agenda, there's a, every, every school committee meeting will ask you to, to give a report of what's going on at the high school, anything you want to raise, any, any activities, any concerns you guys have, because you're really our eyes and ears in the schools. None of us have been in high school for quite a while, so we appreciate you being here and we'll, we'll ask you and if you can let us know how, getting back to school, how, how opening day, that, we appreciate it. Moving on.
Minutes.
Minutes. The open session minutes from July 18th, 2022. Are there any revisions? Being none.
Motion to accept, Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Mr. Devon. Second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor? All right. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Communications and accommodations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packet, you will find the July 2022 MASC bulletin for your reading pleasure. You know, beyond that, obviously, school has opened across the board, a smoother start than we had last year, particularly at the high school level. Just to, I can get this to move to the next slide. Before school began, we had a number of orientation programs at middle schools and the high school. You can see some of our student leaders there welcoming the grade nine. On the right is a picture from Hollis. Hollis had its annual 9/11 honoring the EMS personnel, the police and the fire from the town. So they were able to come to the school. I bring it up because it is the 20th anniversary for Hollis in, in having this event, which is a great favorite of the men and women who serve in our emergency personnel services in the town, but also for the students as well. So, you know, there's just some positive pictures that we could find about schools opening. Each one of our schools is up and running successfully. We are still managing some, some struggles with transportation. As I think you all know, at this point, there's a national driver shortage. It affects us as well. And despite our best efforts, we are still short-staffed. It will get incrementally better as, as not only our drivers, but also our families get more accustomed to the schedules that we're running. But that is a work in progress. So, you know, I asked for some patience on the part of the families that require transportation. We are doing the very best we can. And ideally, we'll, we have a couple of trainees in our pipeline that we think will come on board shortly, which might help alleviate some of that stress. At the beginning of the year, this year, we had the Braintree Police Department present to our East and South Middle School staffs around emergency responses and safety and security. They will be visiting our high school staff on September 19th and then on September 27th, they, they will meet with all of our elementary staff. So just to make you aware of that and to thank the police department for their contributions in this and their willingness to come out on multiple dates to make sure that all of our staff is appropriately trained. It's somewhat of a refresher course. As I think you all know, we, we had a major professional development day a couple of years ago around safety and security. So their presence in our schools is really to update that. To give you a sense of where we stand in terms of enrollments, up on the screen, you can see some of the numbers that we have. If I move over just a little bit, you can see that the high school at this point in time has 1,672 students. East is 977, South at 514. And then you get into the elementary schools, which I have to swing back and forth. Flaherty is 288. Highlands at 408, Hollis at 332. If I scroll down just a bit, or attempt to anyway. This is Ross at 203, I'm sorry, Liberty at 300, Ross at 203. What it really represents is some increases in the elementary level, although from a district perspective, we are down approximately 66 kids from last year in January. Our elementary numbers are going up. The high school is gone up a little bit, but not a lot. Both middle schools, there's a kind of a dip going through those two middle schools at this point in time. So again, what we're seeing is some return in terms of the elementary level, a slight increase at the high school level and a little bit of a decrease at both middle schools. But on a positive note, if you look at the class sizes on the left-hand side of the screen, you know, our biggest classes are really, if you look at Morrison, grade four, those in essence represent our biggest classes, 22, 23, which for an elementary grade at that level is not bad at all. And if you look at some of our other numbers, they're very favorable. We are keeping an eye on Liberty, grade one, but that's a manageable number as well. So we, we are still registering kids, to be honest. So these numbers are not final. As you know, we report our numbers to the state on October 1. So there will be movement between here and October 1 in terms of these numbers. But again, good class sizes. The trend that we, we thought we'd see in terms of an increase in terms of kids coming back, right now it appears to be at the elementary level.
Excuse me, could you repeat the numbers of the elementary school again, please?
Yep, it's, so, I'm sorry, I wish I could, I just might not have scrolled this down. At Ross, you have 203. At Morrison, you have 300. At Liberty, you have 371. At Hollis, you have 332. We got one left. Flaherty, I believe, is 288 and I am right.
What was Highlands?
408.
408, okay, thank you. So what was the increase at the elementary level from last year? At this point, I know it's, it's still a fluid number.
Totally, it's about 50 kids. Some of that is kindergarten movement. And so right now, the numbers in Vanacquid look a little bit lower because we added a section to Hollis kindergarten. But compared to last year, those numbers are up. And so even though from a district perspective, we're down 66, it, a lot of that number is in the high school number in terms of specialized programs. And so that some of that's going to flesh itself out in the next 30 days as it gets to October 1.
And what would you say the average class size is at the elementary school right now? 19, 20?
Looking at the numbers, I'd say about 18. We have some very low numbers. If you look at Hollis in grade one, you get 14, 14 and 13.
We still have some very low.
We do. But what you see is, are what we would consider to be good but healthier numbers in terms of the 18s and 19s. Those are good numbers to have. They're advantageous for teaching and learning. But at the same time, it indicates that kids are returning to the school system.
Excellent. Any other questions from the committee about the enrollment? Anything else, Sam?
No, that was my last bit in terms of just the opening of school. It continues to be a work in progress, but we're off to a good start.
Great, thank you. Moving on to gifts to schools. Cradles to crayons, gifts to school, 100 backpacks, pre-K through grade five. Excuse me, I'm going to read all of these and then we'll make one motion at the end to accept all, all gifts collectively. Excuse me, so cradles, crayons, gifts, 100 backpacks for students pre-K through grade five. Ross Elementary School, gifts to school $2,000. $1,500 from the members of the Tianan Temple. And $500 from the Tianan Temple. I'm sorry, one is from the members and one is from the master. The master. I'm not going to pronounce it right. Tianan Temple, the master. We'll just leave it at that. So 1,500 and 500 for 2,000. One check in the amount of $500 from senior, oh, senior master. Is it Sai? Sai of the Tian Temple. Okay. The 1,500 from the members and 500 from the master. Base state textiles, five checks totaling $163.75. Braintree High School Athletic Department, gifts to schools $1,150. Checks and cash deposited from the Braintree High School Boys Soccer. And then there was one addition, East Middle School Gifts to Schools for $5,000. One check in the amount of $5,000 from an anonymous donor to be used exclusively for East Middle School students in financial need. The donation states that the need will be determined by Mr. Sheehan or his designee. With that, do I have a motion to accept all gifts? Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Devon and a second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Moving on, consideration of trip approvals.
So we have several trips to bring before you this evening and we are fortunate enough to have Gordon here to represent the Quebec trip. I believe this is similar to trips we have taken in the past, but I'll let her sit and explain that better to you.
It is. Thank you for allowing me to come. I want you to come up here. I have Madame Cortez, who is our French and Spanish teacher at South, joining me. She has been on the trip before. We have not been able to move on the trip since 2019 for obvious reasons. We are excited at the prospect to be able to give this opportunity to our eighth grade French students, which is a four-day cultural excursion in Quebec. It is a bus trip. It is both east and south. And it has always been very well received. In your packet, you do have a copy of the itinerary. It is, it's an exciting trip. I've been on the trip as a chaperone. And as a person who does not speak French, but speaks Spanish, I still found it incredible. It was truly an awesome experience. And that's pretty much it.
There any questions from the committee? Ms. Saros.
When did you say this was?
Sorry. It's on May 18th through the 21st. And I will say there is one, the only change in this trip through, it's the same company we've used many times. With COVID, it is now required to have proof of vaccination to go to Canada. That's Canada's rule, not ours. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
So this, it's still Jump Street. It's the same company that was used, yeah. And you figure about 50 kids?
That's what we hope for and the cost will vary a little bit depending on how many kids go.
And there's insurance, parents can?
There is insurance that students are encouraged to buy, that basically they can cancel for no reason and get their money back. There is always, it's always done within how much time away from the trip for, if they don't have the insurance, then they can still get money back if they cancel.
Percentage?
Percentages depending on how far away they are from the trip, just because there are expenditures that happen leading up to the trip, obviously.
And the ratio of chaperones to students, eight to one?
It is eight, is it? I think it's, no, it's eight, it's eight to one. And there will be a mix of teachers and parents.
And a nurse. And a nurse.
And a nurse, yes.
Great.
Yeah, Karen, a little question.
Ms. Tuffy?
So I just wondered how the timing of this field trip worked with MCAS dates. Are the math and science MCAs finished by?
The science MCAs is right after this trip. So yes, that is not ideal. But that's, that has traditionally been the weekend that they have gone and they have not seen a dip in their scores as a result.
The kids missed three, three days?
Two days. They missed two days. Friday, they come home Sunday.
Because it's a school trip that spills out. Great.
To the chair. Is there financial help if students can't afford to do this to their family?
Students are encouraged to do fundraising and there has been fundraising done through Ms. Cortez and Ms. Butler, who couldn't be here tonight, to, for that. The Jump Street does not have financial aid available.
But we do do a fundraising individual. We have a website that we use that students can sell. It's a pasta fundraiser where students can, that way they can sell, you know, pasta. It's an online thing that we, we help them with and coordinate. And we found that one gives them the biggest percentage of profit. So I think they get to keep about 40% profit. So we do offer that. And I know at least at South, there has been financial assistance through the principal's office. You know, for certain families that, that request it.
All right.
Kind of that they tried.
For me, so much.
I was going to say, I believe the same happens at East as well, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? It's nice to meet you. Thank you for being here, both of you. Good to see you as always.
Thank you.
With that, do we have a motion to accept the trip to Quebec?
Some of them, Madam Chair.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Devon and a second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bon voyage.
Also in your packet is another trip that takes our students and staff out of state down to Providence for the Providence Bruins games. This is a trip that we've taken multiple times in the past where we go and share our musical talents with the Providence Bruins. You can see there's two separate groups that would be going, one from Highlands, grades four and five on November 11. And then the second group, grades six, seventh and eighth from South Middle School on November 18. Again, during, in, I believe, intermission or the beginning of the game, they sing America the Beautiful. Parents provide the transportation down, but this is something we've done almost every year that I've been here and it's a lot for these big kids.
Any questions from the committee? I just want to clarify that parents are responsible for transportation and also supervising their children.
Yep.
Just go down and they, right during the game, they just go down and sing, which I think is a great opportunity for them to showcase their, their talents and bring.
Absolutely. And enjoy hockey.
It's a wonderful thing. And, and stake in a game. Yeah. So any other comments or questions from the committee?
Can you, just sorry, to the chair. What, um, what was the first, the date of South again?
South is November 18.
November 18.
Yep. And Highlands is November 11.
Yep. Thank you.
Yep. Yep.
With that, do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Everybody wants him to go.
Everybody wants to go.
Hi. Um, I have a motion by Ms. Saros, a second by Mr. Devon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Point?
Excellent.
Moving right along, uh, let's see, from the superintendent's nurses' appointments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, uh, the first thing in your packet, you will see the resumes of two nursing candidates we have for positions. As I think you all know at this point, it is the school committee that appoints nurses, um, the superintendent cannot. So before you, I offer two candidates that we, uh, want to have working for us in our schools. Uh, and happy to answer any questions that you might have that I can possibly answer, but I think if you view their experience, you can see they're very qualified.
To the chair. Where will they be appointed? And to what schools?
Uh, that's a great question that I'm not sure I have the answer to.
Sharon Herity's going to Highlands, and Stephanie Kellers preschool.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jeff, full disclosure, I did go to with Ms. Herity. Very nice person.
Personal recommendation?
Yes, I'm a person.
Great. Any questions on the candidates? Do I have a motion?
Will approve.
I have a motion, back to the Devon, and a second by Ms. Saros to approve the appointments of the two nurses. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much. Also in your packet, uh, you have seen the updates to handbooks, uh, at the middle and elementary level. Uh, in your packet are also the proposed changes for the high school. The high school and Dr. Scully, uh, came to policy the other night to kind of review some of those updates. Uh, but we would be looking for a second reading minimally on the middle and the elementary le- level. But we were gonna take something out of order first, and I've really blown past that.
Okay, uh, the dress code policy, we want to take that out of order so that we can discuss that at the same time if we're going to be approving, um, handbooks, put the handbook to the high school and middle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this again would be a second reading of a revised dress code for the middle and high school level. Uh, if you folks had an opportunity to review it, uh, the last time we met, uh, we've made no changes to it since that date. So, uh, happy to answer any questions, um, but we'd be looking for approval of this new dress code so we can insert it in the new handbooks.
Okay, I have questions.
Yes.
Um, I spoke to Mr. the earlier, and I also spoke to the chair of the Policy Subcommittee earlier. So the policy, I, I don't have much with the policy themselves. I did have a question on the no hoods, are sunglasses allowed? Explain, um, at the high school level. Um, but I was asking if a paragraph that is on the current dress code policy, if a student is wearing an item of clothing not permitted by the handbook guidelines, parents guidance, guardians will be contacted to bring a change of clothes to school for the student, or the school will provide clothing if needed. The student will not be able to re- to resume his or her regular schedule until his or her clothing is modified. So I, I'm asked that that paragraph be added to the dress code, just so you know what the consequences are if a child was not adhering to the policy. Does anybody have any comments or concerns with that?
That makes sense. It's pretty straightforward, and, um.
Did you want to add anything else as far as the dress code from the policy committee?
No, I think they, the, uh, opening, um, sentence, the responsibility for dressing, grooming. Are you gonna add the consequence? After that sentence.
I would suggest that after that sentence.
Right, similar.
On the prelude to the policy itself.
So, is everybody comfortable with that? So this is the second reading with those revisions. Do I have a, a motion to approve the dress code with the revisions that we just discussed?
Thank you.
I have a motion by, I have a motion by Ms. Tuffy and a second by Mr. Devon. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Thank you very much. So moving from there, then we would again return to the, uh, middle and elementary handbooks uh, for a second reading approval, uh, for those. And again, Dr. Scully has been kind enough to join us this evening. If you have any questions about the proposed changes to the Braintree High School.
Nice to see you, Dr. Scully. Does anybody have any questions or comments or, or Dr. Scully? Do you want to highlight anything, Ms. Tuffy, at a, at a high level?
No, I think perhaps if Dr. Scully could give an overview, that would be best because, uh.
Evening, everyone. Um, you had a chance to, to talk about the four, uh, proposed. We ran everybody's packet.
Yep.
Um, with, uh, with noon. That was very productive conversation. Appreciate it. Have a chance to talk about, um, some of the changes are, at the very least, at the, the end, talking about Bark is more sort of district boilerplate, and then some other changes are specific to, uh, high school issues.
Let's pick a little bit about credit recovery and, and that element.
Credit recovery, I think the most important change is really, um, just the fact that we're calling it credit recovery, right? So previously, the section was more about, um, here's what happens when you fail, and it was written with a, it was written under, it was written when there would have been a traditional summer school at high school, which would have been the primary means for students to take up credit. Um, instead, uh, as things have changed, and this happened even before, uh, the pandemic, and we all found out about productive and enjoyable remote learning could be, but sort of credit recovery was moving that direction anyhow. Um, and so what we tried to do was lay out the different, um, ways in which a student may be taking courses outside of Braintree High School. One for, um, recovering, uh, one for making up a slight failure. I don't know how you, how you would define that, uh, or sort of call that. One where a student needs to make up an entire course, and then also there's a section for when a student would be taking coursework, um, that might be above and beyond what they're doing at the school, because, uh, that's an option which is more available to students now because of the option of learning online. So it's not that you would have to get on the train and go to town at ten o'clock on Tuesdays and Thursdays, which obviously isn't compatible with the high school schedule. Students can pursue other courses. So we just wanted to be clear about what those root were, what those roots were and what those options were.
Thank you.
Are there any other specific questions? I was very happy to see Bark entered into the handbook, um, just for parents to, to reference. Is there any other questions or comments?
Okay.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Lynch.
I just wanted to know if you wanted me to list the, uh, topics.
The four topics.
Thursday. There was, there was, uh, class rank eligibility. You need to be, uh, to be included in the class rank, they have to be enrolled for two full semesters. Uh, the Dallas Victorian, Salute, Salute Orient are named after a third marking term, and they must be enrolled for four full semesters at Branch High School to be eligible. Uh, there was this section about excused absences. Uh, two days are allowed to represent their community athletic club or other outside organization in a national or in international conference or competition. And, uh, as far as I, I thought the change to credit recovery is, was a very good one. Uh, there was also mention of outside coursework. We do have, sometimes have students, uh, who, uh, for example, may be very advanced in mathematics and, and, um, take, uh, college courses and can gain, uh, college credit like that. So I felt that these were very, um, positive, uh, positive changes that would be good in handbook. And finally, there was athletic department update where, um, that added pedagogy about, uh, liability and supervision of athletic and extracurricular activities. So, um.
Good synopsis.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch.
Good, Jeff. I just wanna echo what you said with the credit recovery. Uh, that's important. A lot of kids are behind from the remote learning, and we have that remote learning now. We have an active learner on the, and you can get a lot accomplished as, as Tuffy said, you, I mean, even kids that want to take advanced classes, you gotta start using that. That's kind of a tool we have now going forward, which I really think we should look into and kind of bolster. Definitely get the kids back up to speed.
Thank you. Any other comments or?
I have a question, actually.
Make a course.
After you, sir. Go ahead.
Mr. Devon.
Okay, the Bark, um, section, does that dovetail in with what your safety group is doing? I mean, do they work in congruence? Because it's. No, uh, it's different. Well, Bark is a, a software that in essence monitors the accounts of everybody in the school. They're all our accounts, and it's for disturbing phrases or, or commentary that we want to address either with a family or a student. So it, the notification in the handbook is more to make all parents aware and all students aware of that. We, we do have this, this software that is running in the background that is looking for things that would be problematic so that we can address them. So it's more of a notification. It can, it can lead to some solutions to security issues, but that's not its primary focus. Um, you know, a lot of the time, it's students who are, are talking about something that could be self-harmful, uh, things of that nature. So it is our ability to kind of monitor the, the traffic that's on our network to make sure that we're supporting everybody where they need to be supported.
Thank you, thank you, Madam.
I know historically it went out on parents' way.
Yep.
But it's nice to actually see in the handbook so people can refer to it.
Yeah, and at the end of every school year, we put out notice that we're gonna shut it off for the summer, and at the beginning of every school year, we, we sent out another notice that we're turning it back on, just so there's some expectation that parents get that.
Communication.
Yep.
Make a course.
Thank you. First, I just wanna welcome our, our new members of, uh, school committee and welcome back. Uh, I, I just wanted to mention, um, uh, this year, um, some of the programs that, uh, Dr. Scully has in place. And one in particular was, uh, college-like, uh, freshman orientation. And, uh, I just want to commend you. Uh, you did a great, great job. This, it's really helping students, uh, that come into the school, which is big, uh, scary building sometimes, you know, uh, acclimate. And really, um, I, I watched some of the breakout groups as, as I left, and it's really a good program. And, and I appreciate, uh, you and the staff putting that together for the students.
Appreciate that, and thank you for, I don't know, if others heard what was, what their course leaving out, that he was kind of speak to the ninth graders. I will say that we had a current student, a recent grad, and a more veteran grad. I'll let everybody decide which I'll, I'll into. Really tell the students that it was, uh, you know, that, that it grabs people's attention. We have, at least, uh, we have some students who, uh, who led some groups here as well, so, um, so it was a nice afternoon. Thanks.
Nice job.
Thank you. So with that, we would be seeking approval for all three handbooks with the updates that you've been made aware of, uh, at this point in time.
Are there any questions on the elementary and middle school from anybody? Most of those were housekeeping.
Most of them are housekeeping.
Dates and names and.
Updates.
All right, well, then with that, do I have a motion to approve high school, the middle school, and the elementary school handbooks?
Have, yeah.
I have a motion by Ms. Tuffy.
Okay.
A second by Ms. Cobbleman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Scully for me, I appreciate it.
And Dr. Scully.
Okay, moving on.
Moving on.
Administrator updates.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. So in your packets, uh, you will find two lists of materials, one from the English department, one from the Science Department. Uh, these are items that we, as a district, would consider surplus. Um, we are not allowed to do anything with it until you, as a, as a body, declare them as surplus as well. Uh, most of the English materials will be recycled, uh, they're past end of life, uh, we've moved on to a different curriculum. Uh, the same is relatively true of the Science Department will recycle where we can. Um, but we are holding on to these materials for you both to declare them surplus, so we can take the appropriate action to dispose of them.
Any discussion? Seems pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward.
Like the watch can.
Absolutely.
With that, do I have a motion to?
Recycle?
What, what do we, uh, yeah, asking it to recycle? Why do we?
All you need to do is declare them as surplus. They just, we take it from there.
Okay, declare them as surplus.
Thank you.
Yes. I have a motion by Mr. Devon, second, and a second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Okay, once again. Uh, also in your packet, you will see, uh, the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school calendar. We are seeking a revision on one of our half-day professional development days. Uh, if you look on the calendar in pink, uh, May sixteenth was supposed to be a half-day for professional development. Uh, to Ms. Tuffy's point, uh, that happens to be the math MCAS at the high school. We got to schedule late. Um, so we are seeking to move that sixteenth to thirty-first to accommodate that change. So we'd ask for a revision of the school calendar based on that.
Nice catch, Ms. Tuffy. Um, any questions or comments? Everything else is the same?
Yep.
Okay, I have a motion to, is it, do we need to approve the new calendar?
You have to.
Motion to amend, Madam Chair.
Motion to amend. Thank you, Mr. Devon.
Yep.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Devon. Second? Second by Ms. Tuffy. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we have now moved to the, from the school committee, student representative update. So if I could ask you collectively or individually, I don't know if, uh, if you've created, if you've, um, prepared something ahead of time or you just wanna give us an idea of how the beginning of school went.
Start us off.
Thank you.
Um, basically, we're all excited to start off the year for, normally, in the first time for a while. I know for me personally, it was really exciting to kind of start off the year with, um, no regulations that we've been experiencing for obvious reasons in the past years. Um, and it's just going really well. Classes are back to normal. Sports have started up, and clubs will be, um, commencing their meetings in the coming weeks. I'm just really excited to get back to kind of a normal high school feeling.
Also, here, anything else you want?
Um, I have one question, actually, just on an earlier item. Um, it was just in relation to the, talking about the loss of credit and the dress code policy. When students are pulled from class, um, after receiving a dress code violation, um, are those absences from classes excused? Or do they count towards their five missed classes that could receive a no credit for that turn?
It's a really good question.
Really good question.
I would suggest that they should be excused because we've, we've precipitated it. I'll have to have a conversation with Dr. Scully to see how they're presently recording them. Usually, when a dress code violation has occurred, it, it's not a long process unless we're waiting for clothes to come in from home, which can obviously make it a little bit longer, but they should be excused, and I'll check with Dr. Scully and make sure that's the case.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
Excellent questions all for us for today. Thank, thank you. Look forward to your, uh, reports every month. Okay, so moving on, consideration of second reading of our dates, our meeting dates. Okay, there was, there was one revision, revision for the school committee meetings. Um, January tenth is actually January ninth. Um, I'm gonna read off the dates that are definite, the, the tentative dates. Um, as we get closer to those dates, we'll determine whether or not that those meetings are required. But I'm just gonna read them off. So our next meeting will be October third. They're all here, um, they're all here right now at six thirty at Colbert. But there has been some discussion, and we're gonna, we'll take that forward, where we're gonna move a few of the meetings, um, to schools. So I'm gonna take a few of them on the road. Um, more details to, to be worked out. Do we have specific?
We do not yet have specific dates. Uh, we have, uh, over the summer, made sure that it is possible to do so. Uh, it is. Uh, so working with the chair, we, we can make some determinations about where and when. Uh, but we're, we're prepared to take the show on the road.
Take the show on the road, okay. I want to see the kids. We want to get into the schools, so that's great. Um, okay, so our meetings are October third, November seventh, December fifth, January ninth, January twenty-third, February sixth, March sixth, March twentieth, April third, April tenth, April twenty-fourth, May eighth, May twenty-second, and June fifth. Um, there's a lot more meetings in March and April because we're in the middle of the budget season. Um, that's why we meet often. And again, these dates are subject to change, and there are a number of tentative dates if required, depending on, um, if there's anything that's time critical or anything that we need to meet for, uh, in the interim. So those are our dates. Any discussion? Have everyone seen these dates for a couple of months now? We're all good. Okay, so just, do we need to approve it, or do we, are we just gonna? An actual approval?
I don't think it's the approval.
Just that we're. So it's just an acknowledgement. Okay, so moving on. Policy and education. So we've already covered the revised dress code, but I will refer to Ms. Tuffy. Her report.
Um, so the Policy and Education Subcommittee met, um, on Thursday, um, And we reviewed the proposed changes to the dress code. I'm sorry, to the high school handbook. We also talked about the logistics of of our things to the various schools. We felt that one of the topics that we discussed was communication between the schools, the department heads, and the school committee, and we felt that visiting those schools was a positive thing for us to do. We could see the environment and sometimes the kids would make a presentation. So that's been missing because of the pandemic and and we would like to return to those visits. And Mr. Lee has been investigating how how to accomplish that with his spoken to be cam over the summer. So hopefully, that will go through. And secondly, also, we noted that because of changes in technology and and which are generally a good thing, we are not getting the information from the school principals that we used to. We don't get the newsletters. We are not in, we not are sometimes unaware of the events that are going on at all the schools. So we have asked Mr. Lee to ask the principals to include the school committee as a group on Parents Square whenever they send out a newsletter, so they'll know what's happening in the schools. And also, if there are any special events that we would like, they would like us to attend, like school graduations or plays that we, school committee has had a presentation presence in the past, and we'd like to return to, now that things are are getting back to normal. So the other item that we spoke about in policy educate, policy and education subcommittee was endorsement of the fair share amendment. This is a ballot question that will be on the November 8th ballot. Yes. So Massachusetts has a flat tax and the ballot question is approval for a constitutional amendment that that they can tax portion of the a person's annual income over $1 million. So if you make under $1 million, you don't get taxed. But if you make over $1 million, you get taxed an additional four percentage points on that every dollar after that. So the state legislature has already already approved this, and have they said it needs it needs voter approval to to amend the constitution in Massachusetts. And the importance that we've seen the importance of budget. The impacts of the pandemic on our budget. We fortunately had grants and and federal money and increase in chapter 770 money. But those grants are going to be going away. And and this fair share amendment will provide a long-term, sustainable source of funding for education and transportation. So I'm probably there to talk a little bit more about the fair share amendment.
And thank you, Kathy. As as Ms. Tuffy's mentioned, this is the fair share amendment. It is a ballot question in November. It would ask voters if they'd be willing to create a small 4% tax only on the portion of a person's annual income over $1 million. That means that the money would be constitutionally earmarked for public education, colleges, K212. It would also be used for transportation, including roads and bridges and and so forth. That would be expected to generate $2 billion annually into the Commonwealth. And it would make things more equitable because according to mass budget Massachusetts households that make less per year are a larger portion of the income in state and local taxes than households that in the top 20%. So for example, anybody making over $1 million is paying 6.8%. People that are in the 60% bracket up to 122,600 pay 9.2%. And the bottom 20% who are making less than 22,500 pay 10%. So you know, this would be more equitable because Massachusetts has a flat tax. Now, this would that's why they need to know if the voters will agree to pass this. And as we know, during COVID, the rich have gotten richer, and working families, seniors, and small businesses have suffered. Many school districts like Braintree are facing severe budget shortfalls and fiscal constraints. So the the fair share amendment would provide much-needed tax revenues so that our public school system can provide the essential academic support and mental health services needed to address those significant learning gaps and social emotional needs of all of our students, which are not being funded. There are many school committees that have already endorsed question one, including Amherst, Arlington, Burlington, Cambridge, Greenfield, Lee, Leverett, Lexington, Malden, Medford, New Bedford, and North Adams. There are 80 labor unions, 50 local businesses, and 280 organizations that support and endorse this, including the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, Massachusetts Associates and Super and School Superintendents, Citizens for Public Schools, Massachusetts Educational Justice Alliance. Again, only they estimated about approximately 2,000 people in the entire state only make this much. So it's obviously going to affect a very small amount, but we would see much needed revenue and and our schools could definitely use it, and our roads and our sidewalks and and things could definitely use it too. So I think this is a win-win. So we're asking the school committee to review the draft resolution that we've prepared, that everybody should have, and you've got information about the fair share. I, is it Kathy, you want to, are there any questions?
So we have prepared a draft resolution in support of the fair share amendment. I I think that there are already there are already some states that have a a millionaire's tax in place and has been effective. So Massachusetts would be the first to do to do so. So I.
So you're asking the members, we will educate ourselves on this.
I I would hope that you could read the material through the materials and the resolution and that at our next school committee meeting, if you have any comments or suggestions for changes to the resolution, we make them then and then take a vote whether to endorse or not to endorse.
So you're asking the members of this committee to educate themselves on it, and then you're you're asking that we put on the next agenda for the October 3rd meeting, whether or not we will or will not endorse the fair share amendment.
We'll take it to.
And again, we'll take it to a vote. And again, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees has endorsed this, and that's why you're bringing it forward. And as well as other schools.
Association of School Superintendents as well as a number of other schools. I think that as now that the primary election is over and people turn, people are, these these ballot questions are being certified and people are becoming more aware of them. So it helps to know that there's that we're supporting something like this that would make a difference in our in our financial health in Braintree.
Thank you. We will take it up at the next meeting. There's no public questions at this point. No, sorry.
Madam Chair, there is another policy that's up for a second reading.
Homeless students.
Student policy.
Oh, yes. So the second an update to the homeless policy, which is based, what we're basically doing is just modifying practice that we already have. Braintree adheres to McKinney Vento Law regarding student homelessness. It allows students who are homeless, who remain in their school of origin and provides transportation. And there's there's a liaison. Our our liaison will be for NASA. We have a chance to read through these.
Any questions on the homeless students rights and services policy? Pretty much boil a plate.
Pretty much the law.
It comes right, exactly. So.
The law. So we just, it's just, it's just putting in writing what we're arguing.
Absolutely. With that, do I have a motion?
Okay.
I'm Ms. Cobbleman, and a second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. To answer your question, if you have questions about fair share, you can certainly ask after the meeting, but not as part of the meeting. And I know a number of other parents have arrived. Public comment, public comment was at the beginning of the meeting. We, just to reiterate, we received all the emails. Mr. Lee made a made a announcement, fires step going forward. So and if you, anybody wants to talk to any of us at the end of the meeting, we'd be happy to do so. With that, I have a motion to adjourn.
I'm Chair.
Ms. Devon. And Ms. Saros. Mr. Devon.
Hi.
Ms. Tuffy.
Hi.
Saros.
Hi.
Nick, of course.
I'm.
Ms. Cobbleman.
Hi.
Ms. Lynch. And the chair votes aye. We adjourn.